Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Holyoke School Committee meeting. Today is Monday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and we are starting the meeting at six oh two P M. Roll call, please, Ms. Feliciano.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present.
She is on line up and raised their hand, so I gotta figure out.
Here.
Here. Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, welcome back, everyone. So, on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location, and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law, other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. So I know the next thing on the agenda is student showcase. We do not have anything for today. Ms. Tensley-Williams, you look like you wanna say something?
No, I'm glad to be back.
Oh, okay, yep, welcome back, everybody.
Thank you, sweetheart.
Lovely summer vacation. Alright. Next on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Feliciano, do we have any public comments submitted?
No.
Sounds great. Moving on to next on the agenda, communications and reports. We have student reports. We wanna welcome back our students. So we're gonna go ahead and start with Holyoke High School North, Nicholas Samantha Rodriguez, right?
Hi, um, so this year, as you may or may not know, Holyoke High North installed a new schedule, which includes four blocks a day, an hour and a half each. Um, there's a new block called Reach Block, which is structured study hall with some other school events that may happen during that time period. Um, one of those events includes nighttime, which we have, um, like the school-wide morale booster for some kids who may or may not be feeling it that week. Um, students also have the opportunity to win Howler of the Week, which includes, like, um, their academic performance, uh, if they're here every day, like, it's just something small for the kids to be into it for the week. Um, we're also working on improving attendance Fridays, the day of the week where kids mostly stay out. Um, so student government is, will be hosting majority of the Friday events. This past Friday, we've had tug-of-war, the faculty won, unfortunately. Um, we will be having just some little, like, snacks, snow cones, cotton candy, popcorn Fridays, and some other whole-school activities to be planned throughout lunch. It will mostly happen during lunch. Um, yeah, I'll pass it on to Nick to read the rest.
Uh, the Holyoke High School Theater Company started with our additions today, uh, September ninth, for their fall performance. They're excited to perform the very popular children's book, Miss Nelson is Missing. Dates for the performance will be announced soon. We hope you're all there. The Shores to Sea cleanup will be at the end of this month. Upperclassmen in the Community and Global Studies Academy will work in partnership with the Department of Conservation and Recreation in Connecticut River Conservancy to clean the watershed at Springdale Park.
Thank you so much. I have Ms. Wilson.
So I know there was the, uh, schedule changing, and I'm wondering, um, you know, based upon, you know, the two weeks, um, what is the student feedback? I'm sure it's a significant shift that everyone's feeling, not just the educators and students, but it's, it's a big shift, so. What are your feelings? Or what have you heard, I should say?
So me personally, I personally don't like the schedule. I think it's too long of a block to have. Um, I'm a fast worker. I adapt very fast to, like, my work, and I'm just sitting there for the rest of the thirty minutes with nothing to do. Um, with advanced placement classes, there's enough to get through the entire hour and a half, but majority of the class, especially CP classes, where there's not an honors-based education in there, they're just sitting there for majority of the time.
Uh, yeah, I would say the new schedule pander more to the higher-level classes where there's so much work to be done. So you get a lot more time to, in each block, to work on those assignments, any projects. It does also relieve a bit of stress off of students, cuz they only see half their classes each day, so if they have any homework assignments or things to do at home, they can better space out those projects.
So what it sounds like is, like, the educators need to get used to the rhythm of it to figure out how much work to give, so that we're, you're using all of the time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley-Williams.
The book, Miss Nelson's Missing, who wrote that?
Gimme one second, I'll look it up really fast. It's a book by Harry Allard.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Alright, so let's hear from Holyoke High School Dean Campus, Evan Kennedy.
Alright, so I recognize that over the past couple of months, I haven't been giving a whole lot of, um, CTE updates. Um, and I'd like to point out the fact that I've been at Dean for four years, and I've been through four different career and technical education directors. And don't anyone tell them I said this, but our current career and technical education director, Joel McAuliffe, is probably the best I've seen, and is doing extraordinary work for the school. So I'm just gonna highlight some of the things that, um, Dean has done recently. So Dean Tech initiated a multi-tiered marketing campaign over the summer to recruit CTE teachers. This is, this was our attempt to address the critical need for vocational educators in the region. These efforts result in the success, resulted in the successful hiring of three educators with another hire pending. A note from our Dean team, Dean Tech appreciates the superintendent's support in facilitating these, uh, creative recruitment strategies, which have positioned the school to better compete in, with other districts for qualified educators. In the news of co-op, last year, we had over forty students place on co-op, with ten seniors retaining their placement in the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five academic year. As of now, twelve seniors have secured placements with ongoing interviews and outreach to expand the program. Juniors will become eligible for co-op placements starting in January. As a part of our new multi-tiered efforts that have been launched to promote Dean's co-op program, including a TV ad which is scheduled to air during the presidential debate on ABC, where was I? The goal is to showcase the skills of Dean Tech students and encourage new partnerships. This innovative, nope, this initiative, was also partially funded by grants. Dean Tech culinary students in eleven, in grades eleven and twelve are participating in a unique work-based learning opportunity at the Big E, the partnership with Bean Restaurant Group. Students will be working at the White Hut during school hours for the entire duration of the fair. Dean Tech is hosting Massachusetts Pre-Aprentice Program for the first time in many years. This one-week program provides, uh, seniors in construction trades and automotive-related programs with a direct path to employment and co-op opportunities. Students in grades ten through twelve were issued new uniforms specific to their trades at no cost. I will say this was a big point of contention when I first started. Uh, I spent a lot of money on uniforms, so this was a huge, huge, huge deal. Um, additionally, Dean Tech received a generous donation of four hundred and eighty pairs of construction boots and non-slip work shoes from Red Wing Shoes, valued at over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I believe if you would like to know more about this, Western Mass News did do a story on it. Okay, last week, freshmen kicked off their exploratory program. Ninth grade cla- ninth grade class last week explored four programs, and next week, they'll finish exploring the five programs. Pretty soon, they'll be choosing their top four shops to deeply explore which one they will be their final choice. Dean Tech successfully created the Greater Holyoke Vocational After Dark Pilot Program in June. Six students graduated with industry-recognized credentials in advanced manufacturing and health assisting. This program was a big part aimed at studying the feasibility of a full-scale after-dark program with plans to apply for a two-year, uh, for a year-two grant. Dean Tech received a thirty thousand dollar donation from Stanley Black and Decker to upgrade tools um, and equipment for the electrical program. This ensures students are trained with industry-standard stools, stools, tools.
They need those.
Aligned with, uh, Massachusetts frameworks. I, sorry. In other news, Student Council will be making, will be meeting for the first time this school year on September seventeenth. Um, this year, we will be taking a new approach without titles, with hopes of creating a stronger structural, uh, specific structure specifically around community volunteer work and creating more wide, school-wide events. In other words, we took away the title of President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer to essentially create a bigger show of unity in the school. Um, that is all of the updates, and the electrical team is not training with stools. I'm sorry.
But they do need those, okay? They're important as well.
Also, I, I represent the school. I don't, I don't, um, control the temperature, so I'm sorry.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Kennedy? Thank you so much for that information and the update. To all three of you. We're gonna go, go ahead and move to Superintendent's Communications update on back-to-school and fall sports.
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to give a, a brief update. Um, we welcome back um, all of our students. Uh, we're, we're now in week three of the school year, and I'm very pleased with, you know, the energy that I'm seeing in schools. I've been able to visit every single school um, and, and just walk around, walk a few classrooms, but I've, I've gone to every single school uh, within the first week of school, and, um, I'm hearing the same kind of feedback from our building leaders and teachers and even students that, um, this year felt definitely like one of the strongest starts that we've had. You know, normally around this time of year, you're hearing a lot of transportation issues and things like that, so our transportation team definitely worked really hard to, to plan the routes, and, and we, we just got off to a pretty smooth start. Makes me think about, you know, how much disruption, you know, rezoning was, because, uh, last year for sure was like a, a, a rougher start. We had we moved a lot of students around, we moved a lot of staff around, we had principals in different locations, and and it definitely felt different than this year. This year, you know, folks were settled in. We had a lot of teachers returning. Um, not as much change as we did in the previous year. Um, and the overall, the feedback was great. We had a strong convocation. I wanna thank, uh, Devin and Dr. Rivera Cologne for attending. It was the first time we did convocation in person since, uh, prior to the pandemic. Um, the energy in the room was, was amazing. You know, schools were just showing a ton of school spirit. Um, and, you know, they, they, some of the schools brought their own shirts, they brought, um, you know, their own, their mascots, and it was just a, a, a very fun way to kick off the school year. We had our Sullivan cheerleaders there. Students participated in, you know, the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance and closing us out. Um, we, we had, it, it was just a lot of really, really good energy, and, um, there was a lot of excitement, and I got a lot of really good feedback. Um, Dr. Rivera Cologne was able to, uh, give some, some, um, some notes in representing the, uh, the school committee. We had the mayor talk, and, um, we just had, we had some fun and, and got to set the tone and direction, and um, definitely felt that in the first couple of weeks of school. Our staff were really excited to receive our students, um, and the energy was just a lot different. We do have a, a copy of the full video for those of you that are interested in watching it. Um, it was, it was, it was just a good time. Uh, PVTA, I wanted to provide a brief update, you know, probably the fir-, the, the entire first week of school, where normally we're dealing with a lot of transportation issues. That was an issue that, that I know the mayor personally worked on, um, with, with low, other mayors in the area and other, uh, you know, our state reps and, and, and senators. And we were able to, you know, avoid something that could have really been uh, very disruptive, especially to our, our two high schools, um, particularly those students that don't live in Holyoke but rely on PVTA transportation to get to school. I was, we were really worried about not having a plan for, for those students. Um, we did, you know, uh, Durham was able to step up and provide us with, with some, you know, al- alternative remedies around how we were gonna get kids that live in Holyoke more than two miles away, um, to school, but, um, for those, those other families, I was really worried about, but uh, I wanna thank the mayor for all the work that he put in. We were on the phone. You know, there was, I think, even one conversation we had around midnight, um, when new, as new developments were coming up. Um, he was keeping me informed, and we were working collaboratively, just trying to figure out a way to, to support our students and getting them to school, um, while this is, this was getting resolved. But thankfully, you know, it, it, it wasn't something that actually ended up happening, so um, we were good. First day of school, we had a lot of teams. We had representatives in every single school. We had police, fire, we had school committee members, we had just a lot of people in the area welcoming our students as they walked in. First day of school, that was really, uh, really good to see, and students were all excited to come back. I want an update on enrollment. I did provide in-year packet, um, an update by school, by grade, on where we're at, where we were at, at the end of last week with enrollment. It's, you know, especially the first few weeks of school, those numbers change. Um, but we did experience, we are experiencing some tight classes at, at Kelly School in some grades in their, in their SEI class. Um, not their dual-language classrooms, but the, the ones that aren't dual-language classrooms, so um, we're gonna continue to monitor that, but there are some grades that are already capped, where then students would, that would, if students move into the neighborhood, a- and I'll use Lawrence as an example. Uh, Lawrence for, fourth grade, if we get more families move into the Lawrence neighborhood that have fourth-grade students, uh, those students would, would be going to Morgan School because there's just no space in the fourth grade. Lawrence is one of our schools that has, you know, they're, they're tight on, their classrooms aren't as big as all of our other schools. All of our other schools have much bigger classrooms, but Lawrence's are, are, are smaller, so, um, we're gonna continue to monitor this on a weekly basis, but this is a snapshot of, of where we were at the end of last week. And for fall sports, I just wanted to make sure everybody had a link to where you can find the schedules. Um, we use Arbiter Sports to help us. Um, there, it's not easily printable, but if you click that link, that's in the packet, you can see all the, the, you could see our schedule for all of our sports, and I wanted to make sure um, that, that every school committee member had it. That's all I had.
Any questions, Mr. Kennedy?
Not a question, but I do have a statement. Um, I noticed, this could just be that I'm a senior and only have four classes, but I've noticed that this year does feel, you know, very different, and I think that has to do with maybe, um, like, we got some new staff. I know, just like personally, me personally, got quite a few new teachers. And maybe it's not adding to the population of teachers, but it's definitely kind of helping maybe some, some spaces where students may not have felt the most comfortable. You, we put a really good teacher in that position that, you know, makes students actually wanna go there. Um, and that's all the way up from, I have two new teachers in my, in my shop, to a new student sport coordinator. Right, so I think that this year is starting to feel very different, and again, it could just be that I only have four classes, but, um, I think that so far, this, this year is starting off very strong.
Great, thank you. Mr. Sheehan.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about enrollment. Looking at the report that we got for the schools, or the class, the grade bands that are capped. So if, like, looking at Lawrence, estimate per class is twenty-five, right, and the just max twenty-six. So if that goes down, are you putting a new enrollment at Lawrence if it goes down? Are you moving a student from Morgan? What happens if it goes below the, where the decision was made to cap it?
Yeah, we would have a conversation with, uh, we would have a conversation with the family to see if they wanna go to their zone school, um, or if they wanna stay at, at Morgan for the rest of the school year, but um, that's how that would happen, Devin. We would, we would talk to those families first that, that had to go to a school outside of their zone and see if they want their, um, their child to come to their zone school, or if they wanna stay there for the rest of the school year.
And then if a s- family moves in and one of the children is in a capped class, you split the family, or would you let the whole family go? In this case, all Morgans that were dealing with caps.
Um, that, that's a conversation we would have with the family, Devin. Um, we would look at, we would look at space at Morgan, and, um, if that's something that the family wants to do, we would, we would see if we can accommodate that. You know, given space at Morgan and given, you know, transportation and all that, so we, you know, it's something we would wanna work with the family on before making that decision for them.
And then could the student that was capped this year continue at Morgan, or do they have to go back to their zone school the year after if there's room?
They would be able to continue, but they would have to go through the zone appeal process, which those students would get preference. You know, essentially, like, what would happen is if they, if, if there's space in their zone school, they could stay at Morgan through the zone appeal process. The biggest difference there would be transportation would not be provided next school year because they're, you know, because there's space at their zone school.
So I guess my issue with that is that if we are all about one, attendance, and two, we know that research finds that students who have the least amount of, or the most amount of consistency within their education, excel, why would we be making a student and parent who we have already displaced and inconvenience because we're capped, go through an entire process if we know, if studies tell us that the best option for the child would be to remain in an environment that remains?
Yeah, I mean, so like, first of all, their zone appeal wouldn't be denied, like, they would be allowed to stay. The biggest, the biggest issue would be the transportation.
I mean, it would be denied, though, if it was full, right? If, if this is a, like,
What do you mean?
I mean, if the, so first grade students from Kelly are now, would, are capped and going to Morgan, if for some reason, Morgan next year is full at second grade, then a zone appeal would be denied, wouldn't it?
Not if they were already there, cuz we placed them there the year before.
Is that a guarantee?
Yeah, we would just, we would run that class a little tighter than, than it normally would have been.
Okay, so anyone who wants to sa- stay in their school that's displaced because we have capped them to stay in?
They would be able to stay. The, the issue becomes like when there's space in your zone school, the transportation, you know, if it's on a, on a zone appeal, which in this case it would be, the transportation would be a problem.
And for capped students now, be guaranteed transportation to them if we are displacing them because they're zone?
If they need it.
Okay, but it's, but, so there's no, we're not giving you transportation anymore because your zone school has less students?
Not for the current year, no. They would get it all year, and then next year, that family would be able to decide, okay, I wanna stay in this school, even though it's not, either, even though we're not zoned for it, I wanna stay here, and I, I recognize that transportation isn't a part of that.
Mr. Wallahan? Oh, I saw, I thought I saw your hand up. Mr. Collomore?
Yeah, I'd like to just thank the staff at Sullivan School for inviting me to open house that morning. It was, worked out wonderful. I had a chance to visit the school, the outside and the inside, and the custodial staff did an excellent job preparing the school for opening day. The parents were there, the cheerleaders were there, like the president says, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful day for me and for all the students that attended that day. And I just wanna thank the principal of that school for inviting me to that.
Absolutely. Ms. Wilson?
I'm one, I'm wondering, where did the numbers for the suggested max come from? How are those arrived at?
Uh, it's through our sta- staff allocation model, so we, you know, we have a minimum-maximum target ratio when we develop our staffing allocation, so, um, if, uh, if you have any interest, we have, we have a manual that, like, basically says, in these grades, we'll have a minimum and a maximum target of this much, and that's how we were able to equitably distribute or allocate, uh, staffing to schools, as opposed to there being, you know, gray areas and, and inequities in, in how we're developing staffing. That was something that was really important to me when I first came on board. Um, I noticed that some schools were getting staffed just based on, you know, I, w- without any rhyme or reason, there were some schools that were very well-staffed and some schools that were severely understaffed. And, um, it, we wanted to create an equitable way to, to, uh, to, to allocate, you know, both human and financial resources, and we created a staff allocation um, using, you know, target, you know, using a minimum and maximum, and that's how we ended up allocating staffing, and we've been, we've been doing that for the last eight years now.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheehan, I think you said you have more questions.
Going back to the athletic, uh, oh, I was reading the email that I think either came out today or yesterday, the back to how many athletic events, regular season, non, uh, non, uh, championship games are we charging? It talks about being able to buy your ticket online.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to get you that in for, so you wanna know how many athletic events we're charging?
By sport.
By sport.
And gender. Well, non-compete, because I know MIA, that's the, for any of the championship games, that's separate, that we have nothing And does all of that revenue go into the athletics revolving account? Hundred percent of it?
Yeah, it's supposed to, for sure.
Okay, can we get the balances?
Anything that, anything that we collect from, from ticket sales has to go in the revolving, revolving account.
Ms. Wilson?
So you're gonna, so you asked for the balance on that account?
Yes, in the revol-, in the athletic revolving account.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I'm gonna speak to that.
Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. Um, it is a concern, um, for, you know, charging to get into athletic events, um. You know, I know, my understanding was historically, in some cases, it was, if it was nighttime, you would charge. Um, and then other things, it's like the JV and the varsity, you know, get charged, and it's more indoor sports get charged because you can kind of corral how they get in versus outdoor venues, and it's was more football, but now other teams are charging, and it's, it is a, I, it can be a financial burden for families when they wanna take, you know, the parents, guardians, wanna take the entire family to watch a sibling pay, play, and it's, you know, going to be ten dollars for that. So I would support absolutely getting that information and seeing if we're equitable concerning, um, you know, based upon gender, as well as varsity JV, and throughout the seasons, for, so fall, winter, and spring. fall, winter and spring athletics. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions? All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to vice chair report.
Just with that, can we also get the breakdown of how much money we're losing by using the third party to sell tickets through? Or processing?
So how much money it costs for that third party?
Yeah, I'd love to know what we lose or are we passing all those fees on to the people purchasing tickets? So is, are you buying a ticket and then also getting charged because we're using it online?
So then wouldn't that also go with the, with the um, no, um, the theater? Our students from Holyoke High School North, that's also purchased through a third party.
I guess I'm, athletics was on the agenda, so that's why I was asking about athletics.
And then I would also like to um, ensure that there's an opportunity for individuals to pay cash because not everyone has access to a credit card in order to make a purchase online.
I'm gonna try this one more time. Moving on to vice chair report. Okay, I'm taking a risk there. All right, training dates. This is part of our capacity building plan. So the first training is the budget process, including development of guidelines and priorities. So it's a working training because that's where we're gonna also work on developing those guidelines. As well as looking at the warrants, looking at that policy and everything. That'll be September 23rd. We're gonna start our regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Brief and then go right into our training. Okay? Then the next one is the superintendent evaluation training. That'll be on October 15th at 6:15 PM, same thing. Brief update at the start and we move right into our um, our training. As for the new members that will be appointed once we do the joint meeting, because we would have already done one training, which is the budget process, um, including development of guidelines and and priorities. They're gonna have the one-to-one training on that by MASC. Okay, so they're still gonna get whatever we already done. They're gonna get it on a one-to-one basis and we'll schedule that just for the two members. Um, we cannot continue delaying process for us to move on with the plan. When the plan was created, we already had specific timelines of dates when we were gonna accomplish things. We're not gonna keep pushing things back. We continue working with what we currently have. Are there any questions? Mr. Sheen?
So when you said there'll be a quick meeting and then the training, so is everything starting at 6:15? Or are we supposed to be here at 6 for the quick meeting with the training that started?
So it'll be 6:00 PM, our regular board meeting and then we transition right in at 6:15. Any other questions, comments? Nope. Okay, moving on to updated changes of committee assignments. Obviously, as you know, uh, we're down two seats right now. So um, because we created, we brought back the leadership accountability and measurement subcommittee and we, we all voted to approve the appointment of Dr. um, Caballero Roca. She's no longer with us, so um, I would like to appoint Dr. Yadilet Rivera Cologne to be the chair of the leadership accountability and measurement subcommittee and before I'm asked as to why. She does have a lot on her plate. She has been a huge team player. But looking at the fact with the local control subcommittee and being the chair of that and and having worked in the and being part of creating that plan. Um, when we're looking at this leadership um, subcommittee, that is the group that's gonna be working directly with kind of picking, going through the interest letters of the community advisory team. And they're the ones that are, that are gonna choose who that person, those people will be, who the stakeholder group will be. And then they're gonna be working with them on what it is that they would like them to do. Be it, oh, she went, that went away. I can't see her, but you can see her. Um, okay. So um, whether it's forums that are gonna be done to collect data, whether, however the case may be, that is the group that's gonna be working on the superintendent evaluation process and hiring process. She has proven so much that she is so willing to do this and really carry it to the fullest and making sure that it's thorough and equitable across the board. Um, so that's why I wanted her to do it. Um, Ms. Wilson?
So I'd like to make a motion to uh, approve the appointment of Dr. Yadilet Rivera Cologne to the leadership accountability and measurement subcommittee as the chair.
Okay, so I have the motion set by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Tensley Wilson and because we have Dr. Rivera Tensley Williams. Didn't I say that or did I say?
No, you said Wilson, we're gonna be cousins.
My bad. Kind of started with a W I L, Wilson Williams, kind of blends.
Close.
Um, because we do have Dr. Rivera Cologne on Zoom. I know, but I'm just want to let everybody know, we're gonna have to do roll calls for any votes from here on out, okay? Any discussion? Tensley Williams. Oh, Ms. Wilson?
So my question is, um, I feel as though we're overburdening um, Dr. Yadilet Rivera Cologne. I know she's very willing, but um, she's also the chair of the um, diversity, equity and inclusion subcommittee, the chair of the um, you know, gaining local control. So this would be the third uh, group that she would be the chairperson of.
Okay, so here's what I'm gonna say. As for the DI subcommittee, yes, um, we do have that subcommittee, but we need to start embedding that in all the subcommittees. It should not just be a designated subcommittee that just works on that. So the expectation moving forward is that each one of you that is the chair of your subcommittee, when you're looking at policies, when you're looking at processes, when you're trying to make decisions, making sure it's equitable across the board for each student, not just a select group. So with that being said, she is still continuing the DI subcommittee for right now as we are working still with the naming of the of the middle school because that we referred it to them. But after that, um, it's more so that she was going, she wa- she was gonna continue on like the su- the DI task force, which is um, directed by um, Mr. Mogel, right? Mr. Mogel, so she'll still be a part of that. Um, because that way she'll bring back information um, to the subcommittees on what, you know, you guys could do when it comes to your respective subcommittees. As for the local control subcommittee, the committee is still going to be there to give the follow-ups to Desi. They're not gonna be meeting as regular as before, but they are gonna be meeting with Desi to give them the update on the work that we are doing. Because technically, the work doesn't fall in the local control subcommittee. Each one of us um, in your respective subcommittees has a task to do. So when you're looking at the finance, Mr. Wallahan has tasks to do. When you're looking at policies, Ms. Wilson, you have tasks to do. Uh, when we're looking at the superintendent process, um, hiring and evaluation process, then that would be obviously Dr. Rivera Cologne and the rest of the team. It's not also just the chairs, it's also the team that you have. I did not want to appoint anyone who came on new because that would be throwing a lot to someone who may not have ever been a school committee member first. So they have to learn their role. Um, and like I said, being that since she's done a great job with the local control subcommittee and really working at um, with the rest of her team to create that plan. And it was a plan that we all agreed we can accomplish. And we're looking forward to finally getting our district back into our local control. Um, I thought that she was the best candidate at this point. Unfortunately, I do not serve as a chair um, of subcommittees because I am your, let's just say, when you don't have quorum, I'm there. So I'm on everybody's committee. Any other questions? Mr. Wallahan? You're welcome.
Do our rules even say that we have to approve your appointments to the subcommittees?
You look at our governance policies, yes, they do.
I know like the city council and the president, the points, point members. I mean, I know in the past we haven't approved.
You haven't or you have?
We haven't.
Yeah, well, it says it there. So we're trying to do things the way that we have it until we start changing. We did start with some policies that we brought forward. Um, and I think I just put a few more in on this one. Let's just start doing things. I know change can be hard sometimes, it can be quite confusing. But I think this just goes to show the state as well that we are ready to take back our district. We do know what we're doing and we're gonna do it to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further comments or questions? No, so roll call please, Ms. Feliciano? And uh, you, you heard what the, what the motion is, right? Okay.
Sorry, it's not working. Is, can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Um, Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Tensley Williams?
C.
Dr. Um, Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
We were all waiting for her to say yes.
Mr. Wallahan?
Yes.
Mr. Colomore?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Wilson?
Yes. Great, motion passes unanimously. The next um, is the joint school committee and city council appointment awards one and four. That is set for October 2nd at 6:00 PM at the city hall council chambers. I have sent you all um, just like a text reminder to check your emails because Ms. Curran um, did email all of us um, the folder where the applications will directly go into. Just keep checking it frequently and looking. As for Mr. Colomore and Ms. Tensley Williams, because I know you're having issues with connection, you're gonna get your packet of everybody, it's just not gonna be every single day if we get one every single day. We're gonna look at least three days before October 2nd or at least a Friday before the 2nd to get those. But anything that comes in after that up until that same day, you'll have to receive on that same day. Okay? Any questions? Great. We're gonna go ahead and move into new business. First is the resignation letter for Ward Four school committee seat. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that the school committee vote to receive the resignation letter for the Ward Four and the Ward One school committee seat.
So we're taking him as a package? Okay. I have a second by Mr. Colomore. Okay. Any discussion? All right, roll call please.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Tensley Williams?
C.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Wallahan?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Colomore?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Um, section C, policy revision. And this goes back again to our retreat time. Um, so the next policies um, are three of them. And it is policy BBA, school committee powers and duties. BBBA slash BBBB, school committee, I don't know whoever came up with these letters, but school committee member qualifications oath of office. And BBC, school committee member resignation. Um, those of you that have the link that you can see it straight on the computer, um, the red areas are the ones, the recommendations of what we're gonna be putting on there. And um, the lines across are the words that we are going to be eliminating or replacing. So i- is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to take these as a package.
And I think we put them as a package. Because the motion is that the school committee vote to recommend that the superintendent receiver review recommendations and post for feedback rec- and comments for two weeks. You'll do the motion?
I'd make the motion, thank you.
Okay, so motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wallahan?
Real quick, thank you. Yeah, I um, read the um, proposals and they were well done. And I just want to thank the committee for the work that they're putting in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallahan. Ms. Wilson?
I think the only thing we need to do is make sure that our city clerk is aware of um, their responsibility within our policy. Um, as it speaks to um, the ethics training that needs to be done every two years. And um, I would assume that it would be her responsibility to track that information. So I just want to make sure that we communicate that um, to city clerk.
Uh, she does. She's the one that that sends us out also the email like, hey, you need to send me back the info. Any further discussion? Nope. So roll call please. Ms. Feliciano?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Tensley Williams?
C.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Wallahan?
Yes.
Mr. Colomore?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Great, motion passes unanimously. Updates of committees, policy and governance subcommittee.
So we were not, um, I have not been able to schedule a meeting. Um, but I'm looking at September 25th at 6 o'clock um, at Suffolk Street. And also October 9th, again at 6 o'clock on Suffolk Street.
And you said October 9th?
And yes.
I know there's a Holyoke comprehensive plan being held at Holyoke High School that day. Just FYI, if anybody would want. And then October 9th at 6:00 PM. Okay, great.
I'm just wondering if members would like an invitation or just by notice, is this enough? I'm just wondering if they would like the invitations to be extended to all school committee members?
I think just so everybody's on the same page, we all know.
Okay, thank you.
I think that'll be great. Thank you. And I'm sure Ms. Feliciano can just send it to all of us um, when she goes to post it on to the city website. Great. Um, finance and operations subcommittee.
Thank you. Yeah, um, we have a meeting scheduled for September 16th next week at 5:30 at 7:00 Suffolk Street. Suffolk Street, um, the agenda has been finalized. I made a quick correction or addition to the agenda. Our, some Feliciano will post that. Um, if she can maybe, I'm hoping she could forward the notice to the entire membership, that they can, they can tune in to watch it on Zoom if they want or up here, it's up to them. Um, I touched base with our finance director. Um, so he's on board and he'll be assisting with the, the meeting. Um, I think we're all set. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next, oh, and just, just a quick question. Um, the meetings, the subcommittees, just make sure that you also keep reflecting back to the capacity building plan and look at the dates and stuff as to what's there and what you may have to be working on already within your subcommittees so that we can bring that to the next meeting. Because then that's gonna be the information that Dr. Rivera Cologne's gonna need when she meets with Desi every other month, but the first one starts now in September. So then her next update to them would be November. Okay, great. Next, we have the joint city council school committee. Um, Mr. Colomore?
Yes, uh, I'm waiting for Mr. Jordan to uh, get that copy to me and I'll get it out to all members as soon as possible. The minutes of the last meeting.
Okay, great. And you do know you have a meeting on October 10th? At 6:30, I believe that's when they're doing it, 6:30 PM at City Council Chambers. I think, um, Counselor Jordan, let me just go back, that email. Um, 6:30, okay, so it's 6:30 PM. City Council Chambers.
Thank you.
And that's the, the Joint City Council School Committee Meeting, not the, not the one about the wards. That's separate. That's October 2nd.
Should have a different, oh, there is a different name. This is a joint convention or something like that. It's not the joint convention meeting.
No. All right, great, thank you. Now I'm going to pass it over, um, to Dr. Rivera Cologne to give the updates for the Local Control Subcommittee and the Leadership Accountability and Measurement Subcommittee.
Well, for the first one, for the second one, we haven't met yet, since I was disappointed. But, um, for the Local Control Subcommittee, for the Local Control Subcommittee, um, I just sent the dates to Desi, so sort of they are ready for our updates. And I'm excited to have our first one and let them know about our training coming up. And anything else that you guys have been working on, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alrighty, moving on to ongoing businesses, the naming of the new, of, the naming of the middle school building. So it's the authority to rename PEC School. We received an opinion, a legal opinion from the Legal Department of the City of Holyoke.
I'll make a motion to, uh, receive the legal opinion from the department.
Second.
So we have the motion by Mr. Sheen, seconded by,
receive and refer to the palace.
So receive and refer. That's so beautiful, Ms. Wilson, and you seconded that, so.
I didn't because he changed it. But I will again. I seconded.
All right, so with that amendment, um, any discussion? Mr. Colomore?
Yes, uh, when it comes to us for a vote, we vote for a certain person. It has to be sent to the city council for approval. What is the procedure if they don't approve it?
I'm going to pass that over to Mayor Garcia.
Well, Mr. Colomore, there's an op- opinion there that we, that you received that we just voted to send to committee, so I, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I guess it would be appropriate to allow the committee to, um, uh, ask those questions and then come back to the body with a full report, including an answer to that question. So that way they can do the work. And, and let me know when the meeting is, so I, the, the opinion of the solicitor, I can see if they can participate at that subcommittee.
I think it's important, I think we should do it on the 25th.
25th?
September.
What time? 6?
6 at Suffolk Street.
September 25th, 6:00 PM, Suffolk.
Um, Mr. Colomore?
One other question. Kevin, you can help out. The selection of the two new members. That is citywide and not ward?
I think the only thing that I can help with that is that I know that the Carter, it says if, if any shall be filled for the remainder of the unexpired term in the same manner as the m- member whose office is vacant.
Right.
I'm not an attorney. But I would say, in my opinion, saying that the words "in the same manner" as the member, if, I personally am making an assumption that that term means that vacated person, so Ward One was, the manner in which they were elected was by ward, I would personally make an assumption that the person selected, but that's Kevin Sheen's opinion. Um, I mean, I'm not, sorry, I, yeah, I, uh, Dr. Rivera Cologne can't hear me, I was sitting back, but that's my personal opinion, that's not necessarily like, I don't know if you were to go to court and bring this to Superior Court if they would agree with that or not, but, um, I assume that, I'm hoping that maybe the city solicitor would agree with me, um, with that, and I think the mayor probably did research on this on the first vacancy. Um, no, maybe not. I know in, in the past, I mean, we have had people, I mean, I can't think of a time that we've filled, in my mind, a seat that wasn't from the ward. I think, that I know, like, Dr. Rivera Cologne lives in Ward Three, filled Ward Three, uh,
Ms. Lopez, Ward Four.
Lopez vacated Ward Four, and Ms. Feliciano, um, joined from Ward Four. Uh, I don't know who else on the committee got in a different ward.
Mr. Wellahan?
Thank you, yeah, I agree with Mr. Sheen. Again, I'm not a lawyer either. I know we did have applications, I remember, I think for the Ward Four seat was vacant a number of years ago. I remember we had, we had applicants that did not reside in Ward Four. They were applicants. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Wilson?
I'm wondering, um, based upon this question, if we, uh, need to get a quick legal opinion, because I just went under the assumption that if you, if, if you're in a ward, it would only be, you have to live in that ward. Because our policy speaks to, if you do not live in that ward, let's say for me, our policy speaks to, if I move out of my ward, I give up my seat. Our spol- policy does.
That's, the, what the policy says, if you move out of your city, you automatically lose your seat. We have had people move their war- move out of their ward. It's if, if you move out of the city, you don't even have to resign, you're just automatically out, like, I'm going to use him again, Mr. Lopez, when he was on the committee, moved and therefore automat- that, he didn't need to even submit a letter, though he did. Um, but it's if you move out of the,
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Ward, you, and we, actually, we've had another person that moved out of their ward to another ward that remained in their ward seat until the election, and then you're not eligible to run again for that seat.
But I would like to get legal opinion on this, since it was brought up. That, um, discussion as to who can we, who can we vote as a combined city council school committee to take over these seats? If it's Ward One, do they have to live in Ward One? Is it Ward Four? Do we, do they have to live in Ward Four? I mean, I just made the, I'm the same thing, I make the general assumption, it's by the same way they would be voted in, which you have to be a resident if you are representing a ward.
And I get what you're all saying, and I'll right here, need legal opinion. But also, we need a motion, okay, but I also just want to say that we already have some applicants, so far. Think they live in those wards. Um, Mr. Wellahan?
I'm sorry, point of order, I have a motion pending. I think we should be, address that before we move on.
Are you putting it as a motion?
I, I did, I said I'd like to make a motion to,
So then I need a second.
Second it.
So we have, that'll be for the legal opinion, so the motion is set by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. You both have to stop doing this back, because I'm going to end up calling you Tensley Wilson. And I don't want to hear a complaint afterwards. All right, we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Wellahan?
Thank you. Um, I think the, the law department just did a similar opinion for the city council, um, for the last year or two, on, on the same, uh, situation for the, for the ward, for a ward seat in the city council, so there might be already a opinion floating out there. Um, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Kennedy?
Um, sorry, I, I actually, I agree that we should get a definitive answer, because we have to, well, you have to appoint, um, two people that night, and that meeting is going to be already long as it is. I'm not saying it's a waste of time. We, you just appointed Mr. Sheen, and he's already proven to be a very valuable member, member of this committee. But we don't want to appoint someone who, if there is an applicant who lives in a different ward, we don't want to appoint them and then realize that their appointment wasn't legal. So I, I agree that that is a, a good resource.
Mr. Sheen?
And we also just be, I don't know if the mayor can confer with the city clerk or not regarding, so, there's two seats. I don't know what order Ms. LaFave or, uh, Ms. Mervyn Rambeletti are going to do the wards. But once one's elected, just clarity, is the clerk going to swear that person in right away? Are they going to wait till the whole process is over? Because once we appoint them, they technically would have the legal authority of sworn in to participate in the next round of interviews.
Steph, just keep that to yourself, babe.
So like, I just think we should get clarity ahead of time, so we're not scrambling around at that meeting, like, looking, just staring at each other.
So that's another motion, and right now we're still on her motion.
Oh, okay.
Jeez, everybody wants a motion. Okay, so, let's finish with this motion. Any further discussion on this one? No. Okay, roll call please.
Um, Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
C.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Wellahan?
Yes.
Mr. Colomore?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll make a motion, um, requesting that the mayor confer with the city clerk regarding the swearing-in procedures for the city.
The mayor confer.
I second.
City clerk. Swearing in. All right, so the motion by Mr. Sheen, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion?
I think that's interesting, because if you're not, if, if, if you're not sworn in at the moment, you know, I guess technically if Brenna did, the city clerk did swear them in, and then we jump right into business for the next vote, but we'll, we'll, we'll see if we can get some sort of clarity on that, avoid a debate.
It's more like, I don't, personally, to me,
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I do care, but I would just like to see what the process is, so there's no, like, confusion.
Oh, because we can easily go down a rabbit hole for 10 minutes talking about it. Somebody can mention it like we're doing right now.
I think we go down a rabbit hole for 25 minutes talking about it.
No problem.
All right, do you know further discussion? Roll call please.
Mayor Garcia?
Yeah.
Um, Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Tensley Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Wellahan?
Yes.
Mr. Colomore?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
A motion passes unanimously. I thought this was going to be a much easier meeting. Yeah, make it very interesting, right at the end. We're going to move on into announcements. Mr. Sheen?
So I neglected to bring this up at our last meeting, but we had a pretty momentous, um, occasion occur on August 15th. And that was the 90th birthday for one of our members. So.
No, you, mayor.
Ellie?
Mr. Colomore, happy birthday to you, happy 90th.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday, Mr. Colomore.
That's it, 90?
Looking sharp. All right. Should we sing?
The, the date is wrong.
Oh, it's not the 15th? I thought it was the 15th.
The 15th.
Yeah, 15.
And it's not 90, it's only 60.
Okay.
60, okay. It's upside down.
It's upside down?
There you go.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
To you.
Happy birthday, Mr. Colomore.
Mr. Colomore.
Happy birthday to you. Cha cha cha.
Cha cha cha.
Cha cha cha. All right. Excellent. Um, another announcement for those who said that you'd be participating, the Springfield Puerto Rican Parade is set to kick off on September 15th, so this coming Sunday, for those of you that said yes, you'd be attending, I did forward the email from the mayor that indicates all of the instructions where to go, Mr. Colomore, I'm not sure if you were going to participate, you had said you weren't sure about it. Um, but if you have any change of heart, please let me know, so I can give you the time and where to be. Go ahead, Mr. Colomore.
Here's just, the question I had is transportation. Is it going to be from the city of Holyoke to the location? Or do you have to go to the location first and then get in it? And I'm hoping getting in cars or something.
We're meeting at the location, and on the parade route, there is a emergency management vehicle that will be, um, there's two vehicles, there's one from PD, one from emergency management, so if you want to participate, but want to hop on a ride and not walk, I can make sure there's a seat in there for you.
Hey, because I, Rosalie was in the same situation, and I was just wondering if she needed, she needed a ride from Holyoke down there.
He's singular.
Put them in the backseat of the cruiser.
Yeah, so we, 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 we at the location, if, if, if you're going to participate, I'll let Jeff Trask know, so that there's space in the emergency management vehicle to ride, so you don't walk.
Walk in the parade, but it's, the whole thing is about getting there.
Oh, getting there, oh.
Right, so I'm not sure if there's any other member that's going to be attending. I know I'm out doing my patient visits, and then once I'm done with the last one, I rush right over to Springfield. So, um, we'll, we'll figure something out, okay? And I'll give you the, the times and locations. Uh, Holyoke Day at, and it's not on here, sorry about that, I just kind of found out. So Holyoke Day at the Biggie is set for Tuesday, the 17th. Um, for those of you that would like to attend, um, and, and be a part of it, I did bring some waiver forms that you have to sign off on. So, um, see me at the end of the, of the meeting, so that you can fill that out, and I can send it off, um, to Jeffrey at, um, over at City Hall. Any other announcements? Are there any, like, uh, committee meetings, like special education or anything that we know of?
No, none, none between now and the next school committee meeting, but I did want to let everybody know that an invitation was sent out to everybody to, uh, for a tour of the middle school building. That's going to be on, on Thursday. If you, if you want to just get a, a, a look at the, the building and how the construction is coming along, we're, you know, we're going to be meeting on Thursday, uh, at, no, it's in the afternoon, 3:30. 3:30 is the time. Um, we already have like 30 people that, that signed up and registered, um, so we're working with the construction crew to make sure we have enough hard hats, because I think they only have like 15, so, um.
They did ask us to make sure that we park on the outside part, um, like, not inside of the, of the area, right, but right on the out, there's plenty of ample parking. We're going to say something else. Oh, that was it? Go, Mr. Colomore?
Just a question. Aaron was supposed to get back to me whether I was going or not, and I didn't get any report back. Uh, and what time is that? 3:30, 3:30, 3:30. Right, okay.
Yeah, 3:30.
So I'll be there.
Yep, 3:30. Mr. Kennedy? No, you're good? All right. Oh, I think, oh, okay. Mayor Garcia? She's reading a poem. Mayor Garcia, she's reading a poem, Mayor Garcia.
Oh, oh, yeah, uh, just a quick fun fact, if you haven't followed me on social media and read it already, 146 years ago from today, September 9, 1878, Holyoke Water Power donated land for what later became the site for Morgan School, so, that was a fun fact, good job, uh, school board members before us, and thought I'd share with the committee. Listen, um, can we talk about that?
I'm going to make this quick, I was asked several times not to give up on the kids with the points, so I'm gonna go into the school as a volunteer, um, we will paint, we will use the coloring books, that's the point I will be doing, and we will color pages and I will teach them how to frame them. Um, coloring books, have you ever wondered why coloring books are so much fun? It could be when you color, the crayons do not run. Coloring books have so many pictures and lots of things to do. The crayon colors that you use, they are so pretty too. Coloring books come in all sizes, some are large and some are small. When you finish coloring the pictures, you may frame them for your wall. When coloring time is over and you put the books away, put them where you can find them to color another day.
That was nice, we have, um, a motion to adjourn. We got a second, or, roll call.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Yadilet Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Willihan?
Yes.
Mr. Collimore?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at 7:15 PM, thank you everyone, we'll see each other on September 23rd, and some of you, I'll see, uh, this Sunday.